You're live.
I call the order, the Monday, September eleventh, Westlake City Schools Board of Education Work Section. Roll call.
Here not?
Here.
Lizinski?
Here.
Vanukin?
Here.
Kraft?
Here.
Stoll?
Here.
Everyone could please rise for your allegiance. United States of America. And to the public who wish to stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My computer's not loading, so I'm gonna go to old school paper. Alright, so we like to go through our mission and vision statement. We educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives and to contribute to society. Our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, 21st century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities. Cooperative learn, I'm sorry, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to day driven, continuous improvement and tangible results. I would like to thank our visitors for being here today. And has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Kraft?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Vanukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion careless.
Let's go ahead, write in a board committees legislative liaison doesn't have anything since they are just returning to session today. Student achievement liaison.
Student achievements, I am, as we all are big fans of the Friday morning news, it was good to hear about the writing lab that was initiated by Principal Woods. Just as Clem gave a presentation during Friday morning news talking about the writing lab staffed by Westlake High School English teachers. There to really help all when it comes to just that writing. Allows seniors to explore writing their essays. It puts other eyes on written material. Helps with really any class, not just classes such as English or writing, but any classes that require writing. Involves things like thesis statement proofreading, making certain that students are following MLA style resources, et cetera. And with regard to student achievements, some interesting articles in local newspapers, just about summer programs. I know we have an outstanding, very well-used summer program and we'll all be interested to see some data with regard to that summer learning, because I've heard very much from families as well and students, just how much it has helped. Thank you.
Policy committee, we don't have anything, we did pretty big updates.
Big update, we'll have more. They come, August usually brings.
Fantastic, finance and audit.
We just had a finance meeting prior to this board meeting and I know Mr. Hopkins has some things he's going to share.
Thank you, actually, I'm gonna do, go over two things real quick. One is a quick update to the board, I attended a PD session with one of our legal counsel, Eric Johnson, that was put on or hosted at the ESC regarding changes to the way levies are overseen by district staff. So recently, the Auditor of State's office came out with their opinion, and this relates to a case out of a a district down in southwestern Ohio, where the Superintendent Treasurer and Board of Education was criminally charged by the Auditor of State's Office with improper use of district funds for advocating for the passage of school levy while being paid. So the Auditor's Office, and that happened a couple of years ago, now the Auditor's Office has crafted their guidance on how things should be going forward. Ultimately, it's overly complex and not necessarily the easiest guidance, it's not black and white. But generally speaking, the rules would be is the Board of Education cannot advocate for the passage of a school levy while you are being paid. Now, what people may not understand, I know each of you guys do, but what people in the public may not understand is Board of Education members are not paid salaries or large amounts of money, Board of Education members only make, are only paid for when they attend a formal meeting of the Board of Education, so right now you are being paid as Board of Education members. So with this guidance, while you're sitting in your position at these tables, you would not be able to advocate for a school levy. Now, once the board meeting ends and you leave this table, you are no longer being paid for the district. So that literally the guidance they gave is they're saying it's your dime, your time. So if it's on, you know, if it's on your time and it's on your dime, you, you can do what you want. It's a little blurrier when we get into administrators. Because we often ask administrators to attend a boatload of events in the evenings. We have administrators here, you know, for board meetings, we have outside of a normal defined workday. And so the new guidance is, you know, administrators can give facts to people about the levy, but generally should not be advocating for it unless they can prove that they are not being paid at that particular time by the district. So the example might be is if I go to a meeting and I'm on my, I took a vacation day. Okay, I can now prove that here I, I wasn't being paid by the district because I was using, you know, an approved form of leave. But if I go to a, a meeting or if someone comes to a board meeting and says here, why should I vote for the levy? It's not something I can answer because I can't advocate one way or the other for a school levy, you know, for a school levy that we're running. So it's a little bit different, a little bit challenging, our employees while on the clock can't wear stickers or pins or, you know, and that, that extends to, you know, if Mr. Kosovar here or Mr. Wilson, Mr. Mavor, they go to our football games, you know, and they're there as administrators, you know, on the sidelines of the football games and, and they're there in official capacity, so they couldn't be wearing a, a shirt or a button or a pin or anything like that. My advice to the Board of Education is that we work with Eric Johnson to schedule a training and that might be able to be worked out with, as part of a board meeting or in collaboration with another school district, or it might be a a training for our administrators that maybe some of the board members could sit in on so that you get that as well, because this, this is not just for Superintendent's Treasurers Board of Education, this is for any and all employees of the district. As with this change in the way it's viewed, simple things like wearing a button while on school time, you can be criminally charged. And so ultimately down in Southern Ohio, I believe the superintendent and one board member pled guilty to a lesser charge. The other board members were found guilty in a, in, through the court process, they did not mention what happened to the treasurer, I'm just, I don't know exactly. Hopefully he got whatnot, but it is just a different, it's different, it's something that, that we've never dealt with before. Now, going through all this, you know, I will say that I am, for the most part, very comfortable with the way our last issue was run. We are fortunate here, the school district doesn't hold money for the campaign. Okay, we have a, a separate campaign, you know, support our schools, which we had a campaign chair and campaign organization, campaign treasurer, they did the filing for political contributions, you know, because we have that separate campaign, but that's not the way across all of Ohio, sometimes that can be challenging. And so we're blessed here that we've had that campaign committee and it will fall more on the campaign because the involvement of the superintendent and treasurer or district administrators may have to be limited to fact-based information only, not saying, you know, and again, some of it's gonna be weird, okay, because who's to say that the building is outdated? Who's fact, is it a fact? You know, who determined that fact? So it is some, we're, we're gonna have to seek some guidance when, when we do look for a levy going forward. And we'll have to, you know, work through that process to make sure we're all in compliance. You know, the Board of Education does an excellent job here in Westlake and we don't want to see any one of us or the district in general put in a perilous situation.
And it's to the point where, and we were discussing this earlier, where some, you know, sometimes you just put a button or sticker on your back, you, you, everyone is going to have to be very aware for staff members, they have to take it off if they're walking into the building. You know, it might be an innocent accident, that's not going to be.
Well, and then I'll give a prime example here, again, our public may not know this, but the Board of Education here, the, the specific five Board of Education members are sitting here with devices in front of them to view our board agenda and all of these devices are your personal devices. They're owned by you. If you put a sticker on the back of it, no big deal, it's your device, what do, you know, it's not a district-owned device, okay? But if you come to the board meeting and that sticker showing to that camera to the public, okay? While you're here at, at the board meeting, that could put you in a perilous situation. So it is an odd, you know, piece that we're running through right now and, and trying to figure out. Again, we want to make sure we're doing this all on the up and up. And we want to file, follow the guidance, but this is a difficult guidance that's put out by a sole politically elected official in the state of Ohio. But that official, the Auditor of State, does have the ability to file criminal charges against people for breaking the law, so.
So you can't just give an information session like at the library like we did the last time.
So an example would be is let's say we're, you know, we can, as long as the information is fact only, okay? An example would be is, you know, we're gonna be on the ballot on this date, we're running a levy for this amount, it will generate this much money, this money will be used for X, Y, and Z. Okay, that's all very factual. Okay, we, we will have that predetermined by the Board of Education by voting on, on, that's how we put levies on the ballot. That's very easy to go and, and present those facts. The question becomes is when somebody asks, why should I vote for that? I can't answer why. I can tell you what it does for us, I can tell you it's this many mills generates this much money, will be used for X, Y, and Z, but we will need somebody from the campaign or a board member who's obviously not sitting, you know, at a board meeting to answer the why.
I have a question, so when, when you're talking, or they're talking advocacy, is that once the levy has been approved and is slated for election? Or is that also include the discussion leading up to a vote on?
So it.
Doing the election.
It, it includes all encompassing. So the example would be is, one of the strange pieces of the guidance is you can't advocate for a levy, but you can say thank you afterwards. Okay, so. So you're allowed to say thank you afterwards, okay? So you know, if you bought stickers to put over top of signs and say thank you, or, or you put it on the front sign or something like that, you can say thank you. Unless that thank you is intended to influence the next election. Okay, that's what the guidance says. So if you're trying to influence the election, okay, when, when you're, if there's advocacy of, in our discussions of putting it on the, on the ballot, if you, if you would sit here as a board member and say, you know, I think we need to put this on because we need this and, and, you know, strong schools equals strong communities.
Right.
You're now advocating, okay?
But there's no issue.
You're advocating for the next issue.
That it may or may not even occur.
It's for the next issue.
I can see it, I can see the law coming into effect. Once it's, it's been approved and on the, the election calendar. But, I mean.
And that's the example with the, being, you know, saying the gratitude, saying thank you afterwards, you can do that unless you intend to have it influence your next election.
Then this was gonna, this is gonna limit us in any.
Yep. It's very much gonna limit the treasurer and the superintendent.
Oh, and the board members.
Well.
Well, only.
Well, yeah, so how are we gonna, how are we gonna have discussions about? I'll, I'll just say, hey, we think we're gonna have to have a levy in three years and the reasons are because we're gonna be here as relates to fiscal and we're gonna be here in a way of expenses.
Eric Johnson is going to.
That's. Yeah, and that's where, yes, we would look.
You said, you could set goals, we want to reach the goals, if they have established goals and saying in order to reach these established goals, we would need more funding.
That's all factual.
I mean, it's all, yes, I, I guess, I guess, but some of it is subjective, when, when you say, when you say, well, do we, do we want? Do we want to do eight mil, six mil, five mil and the, and the rationale behind each one, but some of those rationales are emotional. Some of them are, they are factual, this six mil gives you this and eight mil gives you that. But then it's like, well, what, what are they for? Do we need that much of a cushion?
Well, again, I, I don't think you're advocating in those discussions. Advocating is trying to convince a voter, okay, to vote one way or another.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if, if it's.
The rules, I, I understand where you're coming from, I think the rules tighten up even more once it is determined what the actual what it's gonna be on the ballot and while I don't think they've necessarily determined and drawn line in the sand about, you know, your debates about what's gonna be on the ballot are completely fair game.
Yeah.
But I have a sneaking suspicion they're really talking about the intent of the law is, or these, the guidance that's been written is about once it's on the ballot, once we start talking to community members and that's really what it's about.
Trying to influence.
Influence the vote itself.
Yeah, but if there's no vote potential, how can you, how can you be advocating for something that may or may not occur?
So you're not.
That's why he said the, the point of, if you put thank you as an intent to influence the next election, that's obviously not even on the ballot either. So that's why I think we need the guidance then to be able to have the conversations with.
Yeah, because I, honestly, I can't see how that's not an infringement.
And how can they prove that's your. Can't prove that's your.
You know, let's look at some of the things, you know, a, a, a good, and they say a good practice is, you know, using your all-call system to let people know that there's an election, say there's one tomorrow. Okay, so we use our system, say, hey, you know what, please, you know, there's an election tomorrow, please go out and vote. There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
Okay. But you can't say, please go out and vote and support our schools.
Yeah.
Or you can't only do it when you're on the ballot. Okay, so let's say you have, you have nothing this November, okay, but we're gonna be on next year. We can't pass up this election and say nothing and then when we are on the ballot, go, oh, hey, we want you to go out and vote today. Okay, there's an election tomorrow, go out and vote. You can't use it when, only when you're on the ballot, you shouldn't be doing it at every election is what their argument is. But again, I, this is based on a guidance from Auditor of State, which I've seen, and also a hour and a half, two-hour training with Eric Johnson. I think it would be wise for us to move forward with some, now, we're very fortunate, we're not on the ballot in November. So this conversation, if people are watching on YouTube, this is not about us, you know, here in November, we're not on the ballot this November. So we have time to work through this, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention as this guidance was just released a, a few weeks ago. And I just attended this training this week.
Um, I would think it'd be great to schedule something, I know there's some discussion about the joint Board of Ed meeting with others in the conference and then with, for also with administrators. I'm also wondering if it's worth inviting some of the leadership of like PTA, because I know they get questions about these types of things and I think there's gonna be a lot of like, well, why can't they say this? And having some of them involved would be good for them to hear that they legitimately cannot say that legally.
Well, didn't they even used to send flyers home to kids?
Yeah.
Saying, yeah. Their backpacks?
Yeah.
So that's.
All the flyers.
We'll say hypothetically that happened, you know, that's.
I heard, I don't know if it happened.
Yeah, I, I would not confirm.
Against the law then.
Uh, so we'll get more information going forward on that and about, about a possible PD session for the board.
A training.
Moving on from there, we did have a finance, a quick finance meeting with Mr. Kraft, Mr. Vanukin, Dr. Goggan, Mr. Kosovar, myself, earlier this afternoon. And I just wanted to bring the full Board of Education with an update on baseball softball. So where we are right now is we did enter into a contract for a little over 1.5 million dollars for baseball softball improvements. These improvements do include your turf, artificial turf infield, artificial turf fall territories, new fencing from the backstops down to the foul pole on both first base and third base sides, irrigation for the grass outfield. And then it would also include the underground work and concrete slab for your dugouts. It does not include any of the above-ground work for your dugouts. So Mr. Kosovar has been fantastic in working with both Vasco and outside vendors trying to find, or trying to get pricing on masonry dugouts. So masonry dugouts would be CMU interiors with a split face block on the exterior, which would, we would try to match the high school as much as possible. And so the pricing that we've gotten, we've gotten two vendors to be responsive in our pricing. After working through the pricing, because there was some overlap with work that's already being done, one contractor was at roughly $500,000 and the other one was at roughly $400,000. So if we go with masonry dugouts, we could enter into an agreement with Vasco to have the work done, it should be done by the, with this, with the rest of the work in this project, which is currently scheduled to be finished by the beginning of the new calendar year, 2024, but may extend slightly, we've given them to the end of, I think, February in our discussions with them, but that's currently scheduled to end by the end of December. But the issue that we run into is this, right now, the board has approved the administration to enter into agreements not to exceed 1.9 million dollars for improvements in baseball and softball. With the current 1.5 million dollar contract already in place, we are holding an additional $100,000 for contingency. That's based on what Vasco believed was a price if we run into underground problems. So right now, the hope is as they start digging out the infield, they're gonna go down a certain amount of inches. If at that point, the ground is stable enough that they can utilize cement stabilization or lime-kill dust or however they're going to stabilize, if they can get the machinery out there to stabilize it, they will stabilize it and we would not need to have additional contingency used. If it's not stable at that point, they're gonna have to go down in flight space, basically, or different levels. And as they take more dirt out to find something suitable for stabilization, it will cost money to remove that dirt and even keeping it on-site, it still has to be trucked, you know, around the corner, around the back of the field or, or however we're going to manage that dirt. So we have contingency for that. So we have the 1.5 million, we have 100,000 in contingency. If we went with the $400,000 masonry dugouts, that would put us at $2 million and that does not address press boxes. We are required, we need to do something at softball because we are taking out their press box because it's currently part of the storage shed that will be removed and is tipping over into the field anyways, but we're going to move, remove that, so we need to do something there, putting in a donkey platform with enclosures around it to keep it mostly weather tight is roughly $50,000. So we would be somewhere around, you know, two to 2.1 million dollars in, in total cost. Other options that are, that we're looking into right now, there's, we'll kind of go good, better, best. Good is you have a prefabbed dugouts. Prefab dugouts are a post and beam structure with maybe a metal roof on it. Oftentimes, they get wrapped in a black vinyl chain link fence. This is very, very similar to what they used at Clay Playhouse for the Little League fields, except over at Clay Playhouse, they did do a masonry knee wall for, to give a better look of the dugouts. That's certainly a possibility we can look into. Initially, we had shied away from that based on conversations that Mr. Kosovar had doing his due diligence with the coaches. And one of the concerns of the coaches is if possible, they would prefer greater separation between the players and fans. So instead of having just a chain link fence where people can talk, yell, you know, whatever through, they would prefer a, a, a solid separation. The next step up though would be that we're looking into right now is pre-cast concrete, so this is concrete dugouts that are cast somewhere else, currently the company that we're working with is in Norwalk, Ohio, so they would cast these dugouts out in Norwalk, they would truck them in on the back of a semi-truck and crane them into place in the back of the baseball and softball fields behind the high school. Right now, we're trying to hammer out pricing with them, pricing is estimated based on conversations with them, we're using a conservative estimate of roughly $200,000, which would be your pre-cast dugouts and also your storage areas. And then we're also hoping in that number would be a ground level press box area or, or scoring area that we could do as well. But we had, we don't have hard pricing on that at this point. And then of course, the third level or the next step up, a good, better, best idea would be the masonry that I had spoken about. There are ways that we can value engineer it, we could go with just straight masonry CMU wall, so CMU is your cinder block walls that you kind of see on the, would this be the east-facing wall that we're looking at or right behind us? Cinder block can be painted, just like it is in here, you could do cinder block, it would not match the exterior of the high school, that's that split face block that we're talking about. You can also look, instead of doing a metal roof, you can do it into a rolled asphalt or, or some other type of roofing material. But we're looking into those options as possible value engineering on the masonry. So what we're running into right now is basically every time we ask a question on dugouts, we're running into about a week to a two-week delay in people getting back to us. And so sitting here at the 11th of September, we're running out of time. And so the decision is going to need to be made relatively soon now. Decision one could be going with the proposed cinder block, or I'm sorry, the masonry construction with split face block. We could move forward with that, ask for a contract, move forward with that, that would most likely be done by the end of the calendar year, but should be done no matter what by the end of February, which is the current timetable. If we did not do that, we would then ask to do temporary dugouts for this season. So all intents and directions given from Vasco, the field of play will be completed by the end of this calendar year. So field of play will be done, your fencing will be done, that all complete and then your slabs where your dugouts will be, will be done as well. So when we say temporary dugouts, we would most likely look to do a tent over that concrete slab so that it would be out of the elements or mostly out of the elements and then we'd put a bench in there for players to use during the season here. We would have to rent tents, we'd have to, you know, work through that, through another company to do that. The reason we would do temporary is if we're going to go down the route of the pre-cast concrete. Right now, based on conversations that Mr. Kosovar's had, you would be looking at a delivery in November of next year, so a good 12, 13, maybe 14 months between order and, and delivery. There, they've got a lot of orders, they only produce X number per year, it's just, it is what it is. So we would be asking to do temporary through the entirety of the 2024 baseball softball season. And then we could remove the tents for any play over the summer, but ultimately, we would hope to have those dugouts in, in the fall of next year.
We didn't talk about it, I'm sorry, Mr. Hopkins, in our conversation. If you had, I know there's going to be a fence, obviously, for, for protect, but will the fence be behind the players as well as in front of the players?
No.
So there'll be no separation then between the public and the players on the bench?
In a temporary dugout, no, there would not be.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, which is. Exactly what the coaches don't want. Is they don't want any conversations with parents and students and and all of that. It's just a bad situation for every, every sporting event. Type of thing, so.
But those are the options that we've laid out when we we've talked about it. And so really now tonight is a work session, we're not voting on anything, there's nothing that, you know, formal decisions that have to be made. But we're looking for guidance from the board on how you would like us to proceed. If the board would like us to proceed with the split face masonry dugouts, we can do that. But please understand that I will need to come back to the Board of Education, most likely, we'll have to come back to the Board of Education. For additional funds as we would be exceeding the one point nine authority that the the board has given us. The if we, so that's obviously, you know, a downfall of the the CMU is the the cost. Right now, based on our budget. The downfall of the precast is going to be timing. You know, you're you're waiting a year or more. So that's going to be your your negative there, the pro of it is it appears to be. Significantly less than the masonry, but we don't have hard pricing there. And so, you know, we may continue down that path and get hard pricing and maybe they come back and it's three hundred and fifty thousand and we're like, you know. There's not that much of a delta there, it doesn't make sense. But. We're trying to look for that guidance on how the board would like to proceed. And then there is the option still of the prefab, like you see at Clay Playhouse. But again, we've kind of have not investigated that very heavy because of both the separation concerns and. I I think an overall look we were hoping to have.
I appreciate it being at the meeting, having the options instead Mr. Kozovar, Mr. Hopkins gave to us. And I I see the options as being the the least expensive what was accomplished at Clay Playhouse. The prefab concrete or or the masonry, those three. I think the quality that we want to have at the high school. Almost takes that first option that was mentioned. The prefab fencing and puts that aside and leaves us with two possible options. That's the prefab concrete as well as the masonry. And I know that we increased the budget for the plan to one point nine million. When I think about the masonry, although I I love that masonry, it's it could be beautiful. Seeing some of the pictures of the prefab concrete. Dugout was really pretty impressive, I I like them. The apparent savings there seem to be as much as two hundred thousand dollars, which would give us some additional funds. Who knows, we may need that contingency when it comes to really the surface of the field. There are other things that we want, including. Press box, press structures for each of the fields too. And as we explored it in finance, it seemed to me that the prefab concrete, although we would push it out to really a year from now. Seemed like a very good option. Madam President, I know you had an opportunity to check with some families with regard to. A, I I I thought you had mentioned this at a previous board meeting, that some of the baseball families suggested. And we really want to feel, we we want to have turf. Everything else, including dugouts, yes, we'd like to have those, but we really want to play on turf as quickly as possible. How how much depth was there to those conversations?
Um, there are some fairly quick conversations, but in just conversations about particularly, you know, right now, we're just debating and discussing, you know, the dugouts and the press boxes. Pretty much the comment kept coming back to is we are most concerned about having a playing field for his coming season. And so they want the playing field for the in the like the rest, we can work out later, so. It's about making sure they're heading.
And that that helps me, I I know if we make a decision to go with a prefab concrete. We would be, players are going to be intense on the sidelines for next season. Seems that that might be an acceptable way to go and would actually put us in a good finance situations.
Is the precast concrete, it'll be less expensive than the cinder block?
Do you know how much less?
So no, we we're asking for pricing on the value engineering of going down to cinder block. We believe, I will say, I believe that your precast will be less than even if you go cinder block. But I can't tell you exactly how much less it would be.
On the cinder block, and and if it's painted, how often, what's the maintenance on that?
You know, it's going to be similar to.
Even if it's painted? Does it have to be repainted?
No, you're you're, you'll have some maintenance on it still. It's outdoors and so you're.
The ones that are out there today are mason.
The ones on your baseball field are cinder block.
And they go out that the parents or the students were painted. Which is what they've done over the last twenty years.
And they're agreeable to do that, to continue.
I'm sure they would be.
Okay, my other question is, you said that with the precast concrete, which Joe's talking about, the timing is that we wouldn't have it. Till the following November, does that also apply if we were to order it now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, if we, this is based, the timing is, the delivery is based on an order now. For a precast concrete, yeah, it's a year out.
And we don't have pricing. We have. Good estimates.
What is that good estimate?
The the two hundred thousand dollars.
So there's a, there's a.
As opposed to five hundred?
Four.
Four hundred.
Four hundred. As Mr. Hopkins had said as well. There's the opportunity with that four hundred thousand to be value engineered, some of the things down. We don't need a certain look so that it it blends in with.
Right, I agree.
I think that's that's probably an excessive.
It's not right next to the school anyway, I mean, there's space, so I agree.
Right, I mean, if anything, they could paint it so it's it's close, but the cinder blocks is what they have today. Cinder blocks are good in here, cinder blocks, I'm sure, just as good out on the baseball field. I guess the. The question we have to think about is. Timing. As relates to the precast. Were being told it could be a year or a little more. But that's just what we're being told today. Until the time we get to drawing a contract up and going through all of that. Based on how we've done things in the past, it could be another month from now before that whole thing is done. So now you're talking maybe next December or something. Versus, we have a quote from a company for four hundred thousand to do the masonry dugouts today. Other than, the only thing that's missing from that is a. Equivalent of like, say, a press box for the girls softball field. But that could be accomplished between fifty or seventy five thousand dollars. So. Right now, the project. If if you look at the one point five million and you look at the four hundred thousand, you're at one point nine. We have a hundred thousand in contingency in case we have to use it. We don't know if we're going to use it all, we don't know if we're going to need more of it, or we don't know if we're going to use less of it. All going to come back to when they start working on the field and being able to make a decision associated with that. So there's. There's opportunities for for more money there or less money there. The differential, the delta between the precast and the the masonry. You have, if if, and this is a big if, if there's a hundred to two hundred thousand dollar difference. Do you want to wait more than a year to have it? Do you want to put up what would typically be? Temporary benches. A tent. For your players to be playing baseball in March. When it's snowing. And raining. The parents may feel as though that they they just want the field. They may just not be thinking about or knowing that. Has anyone had a conversation with the parents that says, hey, you know, we think we're going to have to put up. Temporary, temporary seats. And a tent for the kids in March and actually for the whole season. And that's kind of how the season is going to go. I think if you ask those parents, I think they'd come back to you and say, you're crazy. I think if you ask the players and the coach, I think they'd come back and say, you're crazy. So then the difference comes back to is that. That value that's associated with doing a masonry or the value associated with potentially waiting on a precast. And seeing what we might be able to save and how long do we really want to do this? Because we all know how long things are taken in the manufacturing industry. I'm shocked that it's over a year. I mean, it's just pouring concrete into a hole, how hard could that be? But so. There's a possibility that instead of one nine, this project could be two point one. So there's a possibility that we may have to either approve or disapprove. Another one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars to have this project come to a full completion this spring. And with that, you would pretty much get brand new everything. And you wouldn't have. Yeah, you put it, you ever gone to a soccer game and they have those big parkas? That's what those baseball players are going to be wearing in March. They'll be wearing those parkas, sitting in there, waiting to go in, waiting to go back. Instead of being in a shelter. So. I think we deserve. They deserve. And we need, and we deserve to give them. What it should be, just like we 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 did with the elementary school. We changed out the windows. Because it made sense, we we did, we did a variety of different things at times during that project. Okay, and and there was creative financing associated with it, be able to get some of the things that we wanted to get done accomplished. So it's not that. I don't want to say. The desire is to spend more money because we we did agree to one point nine. But at the end of the day, if you want to have a completed project and a project to be proud of for the students, the families, the community and this board. Then you're going to have to make a decision relatively soon if you're going to want to go with the masonry.
Now, the other option that does exist, and I'm not advocating for the word of the night, I'm not advocating either way for it, is. The current dugouts are are expected to be demoed this week. Okay, you could ask them not to demo the current dugouts. And we just remove it from this project completely right now and do it separate and apart from the field, working with. Another contractor or however. You know, that is a possibility. Again, I'm not advocating one way or the other. But right now, the the current dugouts are there, they exist, and you could leave them.
Well, what kind of credit that would we get from Vasco?
We would work that out.
Well, we need to know what that is to be able to determine. The differential, because right now, if we're looking at spending potentially two hundred thousand from masonry to precast. But. If we're only going to get a fifty thousand dollars credit, or if we get a two hundred thousand dollar credit. Because they're not removing them, they're not backfilling it, they're not putting in in the slabs and all that.
I want to say, and Mr. Kozovar, I'm looking at you and and jump in here if you'd like, but I want to say it was somewhere around a hundred thousand. If we didn't have them do, now, I don't know if that was the demo or if that was just the the underground and. Footers and and slab. It was just the underground, so so there was about a hundred thousand a deduct if we didn't have them do these slabs and stuff. We could ask them on the demo side of it, I can't imagine demo is going to be a hundred thousand on those. So I would guess, you know, maybe another twenty thousand or or something like that, so. Yeah, so you might, you might be around, we'll just say a hundred thousand would be your credit back.
So so then we're also hoping we find another contractor to come in and take them apart. Backfill, cement them and do whatever on top of them.
That's correct.
When that's ever getting it done. Because of the contractors and their schedules. So we have. Relatively everything lined up right now. We have a price from, we have a price for the last piece of the puzzle, which is the dugouts. And when you start looking at all the different pieces from the different options that Mr. Hopkins was talking about. There is, there is a delta of value difference there, we just have to make a decision as to whether or not. Is it important for us to have the entire project completed when it should be completed, that the students will have what they need? To be able to play and compete in March of this year when they're out there playing baseball and softball.
Want to make certain that I understand just all the points that you're bringing up. If the. If the argument today, if if the options today, I should say, were the prefab concrete. And the mason dugouts. And prices we're saying are roughly two hundred, four hundred. They were both available in the spring. But what would, what would the board's feeling be about that?
But they're not, I mean, I want to debate John this job, but they're not.
Precast is not available.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't debate hypotheticals.
How bad is the prefab?
Barb, let me finish. Do you, do you like the prefab concrete?
I I've seen prefab.
We 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 looked at them.
Well, I mean, I've seen them.
So you like it?
Yeah, oh, they're they're functional, yeah.
So in order to, and 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 the point I was going to make, Barb and John, was. That we we really want to speed this project up, we want to get it done for the spring. The argument is, hey, let's let's spend a couple hundred thousand extra dollars and let's get this done in the spring. Am I understanding the argument or no?
No, I think that's, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, I think.
Hey, let's get this done in the spring, let's just spend a couple hundred thousand extra.
And we may, we may or may not have.
Understood, yeah. Okay, I just, I just wanted to make certain that I understood.
Yeah.
Well, and the the cost may even be more a year from now if we wait, I mean, with inflation.
What are we waiting for?
If we waited on the precast, waited on the dugouts to be done it from another contractor on the masonry.
So we had talked about making a decision now to get the precast, but we just have to wait. So I don't understand, Barb, your argument. If we wait.
We can't, I mean, if we wait. Keep the present dugouts, like you said, and wait to do it at a separate time in another year, so the cost may even be higher.
Mention, yeah, but I I I wasn't bringing that up.
Yeah.
I I was just bringing up, one, do we like the prefab, some of them we like it. But the reason we want it done is in the spring is we 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 just, we want it to be done.
Right, and and.
Let's spend a couple hundred thousand extra in this.
Yeah, we don't know what the numbers, we don't know what the number is in the precast. So that that's, that's the unknown, and it might take another couple of weeks. I mean, we, to Dave's credit and Todd's credit, they've been asking for months and months when we were trying to get. Just the original plan and then to get the documents and then everything else. Everything has been a very slow, slow process, not for lack of asking, I could tell you that. So we have the ability to do it. When we came up with the one point nine million, the numbers we were giving at the time. Were just like Mrs. Lizinski said, those were numbers that were here. As as time goes on, the longer you wait. Costs go up. We also made the decision, or this board made the decision, I wasn't here. That you wanted to engage and have a full sprinkler system for both softball and baseball. Softball has not had one in, I don't know how many years. Five, ten, since high school's been down, okay? And baseball has only been connected over the last, what, three years? Five? Five years, okay, so prior to that, first five years after the, after the high school was done, it didn't have water for five years. I don't remember anybody ever complaining about it. So, you know. Before you made a decision saying you wanted to go with a full sprinkler system for the outfield for both, for both. Right there alone is over a hundred thousand or more.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand.
That. Just so that it can potentially look green in the summer. But you'd rather delay a project potentially, not all of you. And have the kids be in parkas in March. So. I guess those, those were my, my thoughts, that since everything is lined up, we have. At all the pieces, we just have to pull the trigger with the masonry, it could be done, and it could be done in April. Or prior to April, so to the baseball season and softball season.
Have we had conversations with the coaches?
Not on this particular topic, we got their feedback prior to asking, like I said, they they had mentioned when when we asked about what type of dugouts they. Did ask that they had the separation if possible. We asked about what type of dugouts they, uh, uh, did ask that they, uh, had the separation if possible.
If we're doing basin or basin area, um, when do we have to make the decision on that?
We're gonna have to make a decision here real soon. Uh, probably, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the next week or two at the most.
Can we get pricing on the value engineering that down?
We can ask for it. I, I can't tell you if we can get it from them, but we will ask for it.
It doesn't mean that we can't get it, we might not get the number right now. But if they say that they can do it, they have to go back and through their numbers and work it out, and it doesn't beat our timetable as to what those numbers are. It still could be less than four hundred thousand. We know the max is four hundred thousand. So. It's not gonna be more than that. It's potential has that it could be less than that. With value engineer, but we don't know if it's fifty thousand or what. Yeah, right?
Correct.
So we can gather that.
We can.
And our next meeting is when?
We can always add a new me, another meeting if.
So I would, I would, I would, uh, since we're just having discussions. I would say that we need to make a decision, uh, at that meeting as a direction to what we're going to do in the spring for the dugouts. And if you have the opportunity, I would talk with players, both softball, baseball, tell them what their options are.
You've always been our, our go-to baseball softball guy.
And the parents.
Yes or no? John?
Pardon me?
You've always been our go-to baseball and softball guy. Can you do that?
Yeah, oh, no.
Okay, I have one last question. And because I have not seen them pay attention to them, how bad are the prefab that are over at, uh?
Yeah, I won't, I would not.
They're nice. I mean, it's, it's nice. It's just, does it, it's a, it's a chain link on the back and.
Oh, okay. So you really want more solid.
Think of it as softball.
Yeah.
How the softball is, it could be a little bit nicer fencing and there might be a windscreen or something.
And Barb, you know that those, that was not an option we were even thinking.
Considering.
Yeah.
Uh, what would, uh, what would, um, not that we're thinking of it, but I would like to know, what would it cost us if you did do the temporary, uh? Benching in the tents?
Uh, we can ask. I, I don't have a number on it. Um. The, we can, we can call and, and have information ready for you.
But it would be thousands of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have to imagine you're talking about renting the tents, you know, four tents for, you know, two months or more. Uh, uh, you know, because you're going through March, April, yeah, at least through the middle of May. Um, you know, so you're looking at at least two and a half months. You're gonna be in thousands of dollars, I mean.
So it's almost like throwing money away. I mean, that could be put towards.
It, I, I think it goes back to what Mr. Craft was, uh, you know, if the, if the board want, if the board's okay with the. Uh, look of the, the precast concrete, if the board's okay with, uh, waiting for those, for that, and your savings is. A couple hundred thousand dollars, it may cost you a few thousand, uh, you know, to have that weight. But it depends on ultimately how the board would like to, you know, what their, what the board is comfortable with.
What was the first approved budget amount?
Um, you know, I don't think we ever laid out a, uh, uh, formally laid out a budget, approved budget amount. Um, but you know, as we started this project, uh, it was going back a couple of years, it was a million dollars. Uh, to do just the turf, uh, infield turf itself. Uh, it, as we went and did request for proposals for a design build, uh, we started getting pricing right around one point five million. Um, which included, uh, dugouts, uh, at least initially in, in the conversations. Uh, as we've gotten more into it and have added different things and tweaked different things, we're at that one nine number right now.
Yeah.
Like, I was just gonna say, one, one more point we need to consider, it's not just our students. It's the students of all the teams that come in here that were, that are, our players are playing against. Both for softball and baseball. They may or may not know to bring a parka in March, April to come play at Wesley. So.
You're big on these parkas.
You see this come from the softball folks, they have real nice ones, you see them, they're, they're good.
Hmm, okay, uh, moving on to, uh, curriculum committee. Uh, Mrs. Lizinski and I had a fantastic tour, uh, Dover campus and Wesleyk Elementary School with Mr. Wilson. Walking through, talking to different staff members and administrators, um, seems like the new math curriculum is moving along. Some hiccups in the beginning of the year, but you know, it'll be interesting to see how it's going, especially come, uh, se- second semester. And we are at the high school Wednesday.
Yep. So thank you for arranging that.
Fantastic. Anything I community outreach?
As Dr. Goggan mentioned in his weekly update, a number of us had an opportunity to attend a preview of a film. Produced to educate young students about the events of nine eleven, two thousand and one. Those events, of course, change our country and it changed our world forever. Uh, the film is designed to be followed by public speaking and inquiry. And our viewer, um, our view, uh, that night was followed by three local citizens. That were in Manhattan on nine eleven, two thousand and one. One was a cousin of Christina Sangar Rook. Uh, the Wesleyk High School graduate, also a Michigan graduate, Christina. Was employed by Cantor Fitzgerald on the one hundred and fourth floor of the North Tower of the World Trade Center. Christina was taken from us on September eleventh. At the young age of twenty-five, she touched the hearts of every soul who was lucky enough to be in her life. With unforgettable love and caring and kindness. Christina, we will never forget. We continue our collaborations with St. John, uh, Medical Center. Uh, with the, uh, uh, schools when it comes to, um, uh. The scholarships that her family gives every year and, um, uh, that was a, that was a great event.
Could I also interject about, um, Mr. Bobel, Mark Bobel?
Please.
Who was, uh, in the Coast Guard and he is a Wesek resident, both of his children graduated from Wesek High School. He was second in command that day, um, of the, his Coast Guard, uh, unit and his. Boss was out of town, so he was really the commander. Um, and he is the one that put out the call to all the watercraft, anybody that had a boat. Uh, in the area to come, uh, start getting people off of the island because the. Trains were closed down and everything, so, um, just to give him credit. He, he does live in Wesleyk and he was the one that also procured the, uh, piece of iron. Uh, and, and he worked on that for many years to get that, and that's on display at Porter Library.
Fantastic. Thank you for attending the event.
Hmm, thank you for attending. Oh, it was very moving, very moving, uh, and when you think of it, three hundred and forty-three. Firemen died that day. That had to totally devastate their whole fire department in the city, but it was, it was very moving.
But even as the gentleman was speaking, there was also a speaker who was in, uh, the World Trade Center when it hit and would, uh. Like he was on the fifty-fifth floor.
Fifty-fifth floor, yes.
And he said they were going down two by two until they got about to the twenty-fifth floor. And then had to go one by one because as they're trying to get out, there's firemen running past them just to stream. Um, you know, there, that, that's just such an amazing sight where you're in a position where you're just trying to get out and save yourself. And then you have people running past you going up.
Sure.
So that's. And credit to, uh, you know, um, Rocky River Public Library and, and Porter Public Library for organizing a lot of that and the show on. Um, played a big role in that, it was really nice of them.
Thank you. Any other community outreach? Okay, moving on to review of the district mission and vision statements, we had a discussion a number of months ago about making some edits. Um. For the mission and there was no changes to the mission. For the vision statement, it was removing that twenty-first century line. And, um. That was. Pretty much the main one or.
And changing the word insure to ensure.
It, um, that's further on with the, uh, belief statements, and then the, really the biggest changes were in the, um. Board Superintendent CFO Treasure Essential Agreement, just changing it to the treasure guidelines, updating. Um, the, the phrasing there, develop these guidelines to facilitate the work instead of talking about an essential agreement. Getting rid of the continuous improvement plan, um, and calling it the strategic plan.
Thank you for working on that.
Any other comments or feedback? And then we will vote on this in our organizational meeting in January. Okay. Um, there was a, okay, so that covers the mission and vision statements and the belief statements in the framework for board operations. Guidelines, any other comments on that? There was a request to review also the Board of Education committees that we have ourselves. Um, we have a policy committee, a finance and audit committee. Um, a curriculum committee and a community outreach committee. The OSBA delegate in alternative, uh, legislative liaison and the student achievement liaison, those are more OSBA. Delegation, um, designations. Um. So Dr. Goggan and Mr. Hopkins and I had a conversation and we reviewed a listing of committees from other districts. Thank you to Mr. Hopkins Office. Uh, made some calls around. I also reached out to a couple of different people, um. Do people have thoughts to start off with? On, and you know, certain committees you're enjoying, certain committees you'd like to stay.
Should you want to share?
Okay, so what we talked about was adding a business advisory committee. And adding a facility planning slash capital improvement committee. This would not be PI related, this would not be small fees. Basically, we're talking about. Large capital expenditures over half million dollars more, and then how to fund it also. So those were the big committees that we talked about re- creating on the Board of Ed where that would be Board of Education members only. On that, and it would be limited to two, um, and adding, there is a safety committee that Dr. Goggan has. Um, that's administrators, we talked about adding a Board of Ed liaison to that. And we've also talked about, uh, the Westshore Consortium. Um, most of the other consortiums have a Board of Ed. Designate from each building or from each school district. In working with Westshore to create that also. I know they have a superintendent and principal committee, but also was it trying to do, um, getting. The Board of Education involved. Thoughts? So it would be two additional committees and then a liaison for two additional spots.
Could you give more, uh, background on the business advocacy one?
Business advisory?
Advisory, yeah.
So some of that is something that we are required by the state, which we do through the ESC.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But this would also help to engage some of these businesses in the Wesleyk community. And people who work for businesses in the, live in Wesleyk but then work elsewhere, and I think it'd be a good way to help engage. Some of these community members for support, whether we're talking sponsorship. Whether we're talking about speakers, whether we're talking about feedback on programs.
I know in the past, Dr. Goggan has invited, uh, us to ESC, that, what is it, monthly?
It's not, didn't know, they haven't, it hasn't been monthly, but.
Okay, but periodic meetings, inviting those business leaders, and is that something I can be extending to the entire board?
Probably not the entire board, but I think if you did, see, what I think you could do with business advisory is. Um, you could bring, like, so for example, if you had two, uh, one board member, two board members. You can bring them to the business advisory meetings at ESC, then you can expand it if you want. If you wanna create something local, kinda like we have the finance committee meetings, do some outreach, um. And try and get businesses more engaged or get more feedback from them, might be something that could be beneficial.
If you haven't already, could, could, um. Are you just looking for, for feedback, initial feedback, uh, on the ideas? Is, it'd be good to have. It kinda like laid out in bold, what, what, what the thoughts are behind each one of these.
Yeah.
And the goals, you know, we're looking to accomplish associated with them.
And we wouldn't be voting on it until January anyway, so.
And the potential overlap that some of them may have with some of the other committees.
There's definitely going to be, especially for some things like facility planning, capital intervention, there's definitely going to be overlap between that and. Finance committee, and this is where it's sort of that, starting those conversations and having those larger.
So these committees don't already exist.
Business advisory and facility planning, capital improvement would do not exist.
Uh, I would say that the capital improvement is primarily driven by the needs of the district. Um, which typically, Mr. Guy, Dr. Goggan, Mr. Kofar, Mr. Hopkins. Um, are responsible for the entire district, um, so I. Part of that, I think, is in their job descriptions to make sure the buildings don't fall down and we have what we need as relates to, um. And if we don't, that's when we, we bring an idea to them, um, as to that is, so, um. I just wanna make sure that. We have the right goals, uh, associated with why we would want some of these.
We can expand the thought on.
Yeah.
We can take that and do that.
Is I, I'd hate to just create more bureaucracy when, when we don't need it.
And what were the other two? So these would just be liaison positions, and so the safety committee already exists.
And I think that's a good idea, that you put an ad hoc person on there, but it's a very important, very. Committee that obviously needs to be.
Who's on it now?
Uh, no board members, but it.
Yeah, no BOE members. It's, uh, me, uh, Dave, our SROs, uh. First responders are invited, both police and fire. We get more participation from police because they're hired, um, and. Uh, we have a parent, we have a classified member, a teacher and some administrators.
And I know unofficially, the president of the board has always been involved in that unofficial. So maybe you would wanna make it efficient.
Let's make a liaison.
Yeah.
Cause it does help, what, one of the things we talked about today is that this does help with conversation, so if we're. Yeah, we bring something to the board and, and say, this is something that the safety committee, um, discussed. Well, that's, you know, it's hard sometimes for a board member to visualize, say, well, who's on it? What'd you talk about? Why'd you say this? But then to have another board member in there, and it's like, oh, well, this was the idea and this is how we vetted it out, and I think it just adds a little bit to it.
Yeah. Not to belabor that, but I was surprised that a few, I think it was a week ago, uh, one of the districts, I think out in Marin County. They did, someone did a, a news story on it, and they were talking about some of their safety things that they actually put in, which I really thought was. Not maybe real appropriate, when they're talking about the glass and riding different things associated with it, and I was like. Right, why are you sharing that?
Yeah.
Part of your safety.
That's a, that's an interesting point. What are your thoughts about, um, the driver's license reader, um, being on my crest recently? Do you have any feelings about one?
The, oh, the license plate. Uh, drive, because we do use driver's license rate, we scan those when people come in too.
License plate reader.
License plate when they enter the parking lot. I, I don't have an issue with, um, that being public knowledge at all. Um, that's one that, um.
It's readily viewable as you're pulling.
Yeah.
And if you especially know what you're looking for, you know that it's.
And especially since the city of Wesleyk does it already.
Yeah. Well, but I think what his point is.
Like, so your, your point, your position is a, being in the press, your answer to the question is, yeah, I'm okay with it being.
Oh, I am. And, and actually, when we spoke with, uh, Flock is the name of the company, they encouraged that. Um, you did go out and explain it because if you don't, then people are gonna just make something up and, and.
What is this?
Well, I mean, they, they actually shared, um, uh, two different scenarios. One where people gradually just found out, I can't remember the two different articles, but it was one thing where, um, uh. The district was forthcoming with it and said, this is what's happening, and then. I, I think it was an example of when it wasn't, and then just how it was skewed to more of a negative.
I never knew that the, the city did all the license plates coming in and out of the city, which I'm glad they do.
And in high traffic areas.
Yeah.
It, they were, it even recently talked about that, um, situation where there was a gentleman roaming backyards late at night.
Oh, yeah.
They were able to catch that person within, I wanna say, twenty-four hours.
Less than that.
You've seen some of the flock readers.
One of, one of the tools that, that helped them, obviously, in, in that situation. And again, I don't have full understanding of it, but I do believe that, the, the, not our flock cameras, but flock cameras in the city played a role.
In the community, I think they coordinated with.
There was a number of elements, but flock is part of it.
I'll tell you, I just spoke with a former fairview policeman who had retired after twenty-five years. He said our. He said our our police have the most advanced, but yes, that they're the best and they use technology very, very well.
I think, and I agree with that person and 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 I think the other thing that our um uh police department does a nice job with is when they have something like that, like someone was walking, they they get it out there. You know, they'll they'll push it out and put it on their social media and say, help us get this person.
Yeah.
And they do.
Yeah.
Uh Mrs. Litzinski just.
Yes, what was the other?
The other one was a Westshore.
Liaison.
Liaison and that would be something that we would have to work with Westshore to create, which I have a sneaking suspicion they are going to be very.
Well, and and it doesn't have to, so we don't have to create something, when you do a Westshore liaison, they, it doesn't if if the other districts don't want to do it, that's fine, it's not like you're gonna set up meetings, but it could be um the Westshore liaison schedules tours like your curriculum does and then you have a and and you you get information about Westshore and you sit here and say, I was able to go through and I saw their new whatever program and and here's some information that's coming out or they came and visited Wesleyk. They did a job fair, so I think getting that information uh from the old eighties, I could be good.
Who's on this page already?
There's no committee.
The West shares it not up there.
Not not a committee.
Oh, yeah.
Open the door there.
That's right.
Or we have a.
Oh, look at that.
See, we have another visitor to the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Liaison to the board.
I I don't say, I do think it's important that the Westward liaison uh brings some uh food from the Ranger Castle.
Yeah. Pastry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Other thoughts on any of these? Other things you feel that were needed or changes need to happen? Um, moving on to board comments.
About the demon football, huh?
Oh, wow.
About that.
That was a great game last night, uh Friday night. Uh, we do need to have a discussion about our next uh the two chapters and.
Sure. Um, before we get to that, I I know in uh this week's briefcase, um uh the survey required public schools complete a survey about their core literacy curriculum, who does that? Who would do? Gotcha.
We'd have to make the decision.
How extensive is that report?
Yeah.
Because.
So.
Yeah, the survey, yeah.
I'd say a learning is it, softball's never had it anyway.
Okay, and that's a survey from OSBA that's.
No, it's from state.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. And um youth truths.
Yes.
Um youth truths, we just completed the last youth truth, when and what will we?
Last year and uh what we've we've been doing it annually and we did not sign up to do it this year. Um, we were talking about whether we do it like every other year, if we push it out or if we do our own uh shorter one, I think the the issue was we were doing it every year and and it was just like, yeah, and and I think that was about ten, ten fifteen thousand dollars and the grant funding wasn't there either, yeah.
Thank you.
How would that feed also into, because I know part of the brave ad, there was gonna be surveys of.
Yeah, we wanted to do um uh like do more frequent, but like one question surveys. You know, where you just put a question out um to people and you're more likely to get feedback.
Yeah.
Um, let me do something like that.
You recall the youth truth brief? Uh, it was a uh.
No.
Uh, I know youth truth going through uh some of those reports and meetings in the past. Uh, there was a brief that touched on subject matter and it looked at grade levels and it gave uh an understanding and I.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were saying like a separate product, that was a shorter version of youth truth.
Can I, can I see a copy of that?
Sure.
Bring it something like this. All right, good.
I'm gonna let you go ahead and.
Yeah, absolutely, so we had an interesting conversation prior to uh the board meeting and uh you know, why why do this and the question is, you know, have have you ever engaged in a conversation or um led a group meeting? And you said something that took all the air out of the room and shut everyone off and I'll just go around the room, Mr. Fanukin, yes or no?
I I think at times.
Yes, yes and no.
People have a lot to consider.
Right, Miss Lizzinski.
Have
just.
Have I ever made the statement or have I heard the statement?
Have you ever um engaged, yeah, have you ever engaged in a conversation? Uh, it could be with one other person, Mr. Kosovar, or maybe in a in a room that you're you're leading a group discussion and you said something and it sucked all the air out of the room and.
Sure.
Shut.
Negativity, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe negativity, Mrs. Pernas?
Oh, definitely.
Doctor Stoll?
Yes.
Yeah, and and that's, that that's um uh literally one of um one of the topics covered in uh chapter uh chapter six and seven, actually specifically chapter seven, page one thirty-eight, uh second full paragraph and and why why should we be cognizant of that, uh because respect is like air. Uh as long as it's present, nobody thinks about it, but if you take it away, it's all that people can think about. Um, and that that was one big takeaway uh for me in in chapter seven. And I know the the reading is kind of long and it's it's kind of a kind of drudgery, right, Mrs. Lizinski? And um you know, as as I think about it, I I'm gonna bring clip notes for each of you next time, uh that that I have here. And in in chapter six, um uh State My Path talks about those skills, skills including when you do want to say something, so you don't suck all the air out of the room, uh share your facts, tell your story, ask others paths, talk tentatively and encourage testing. And some of those important questions that you may want to ask uh yourself, am I really open to other views? Am I talking about the real issue? And am I confidently expressing my own, so those are some of my thoughts on chapter six. Anyone else have thoughts on chapter six?
Had a couple of thoughts.
Yeah.
I I thought it was interesting on page uh one forty-nine where they talked about recognize the purpose behind the strategy. I think, you know, if you look at most people, when they have differences, they really want to achieve the same common goal and they have the same it may be different points of view to get there and if you consider that, that helps you to work with the other other partners better.
Right.
I I agree a hundred percent, my wife tells me that on every. We're saying the same thing, just two different ways and but it's hard to get to that point and it is a battle, that's true.
I really like the discussion about the mutual purpose and the mutual respect and then especially when um on page one thirty-nine, when you're going into the can you respect people you don't respect? I thought that was an interesting.
Can you repeat that?
Especially um diving in on page one thirty-nine, the discussion of can you respect people you don't respect?
That's hard.
Barb lost respect for me for a couple of years and then she she, I think she gave it back to me. Maybe it was three years. Now it's more four, five.
So one of the things I I liked and it's in the structure of the book is how they use examples where it's almost like uh reading a script where um you would have exchanges between people and the ones that they specifically put in there, they're, they he does a good job with them because you can see them happening. And then it's almost like you're watching the conversation uh divulge into un-unproductive and negative discourse and I think that's something to be able to look at that and like you had indicated before saying, have you been there, have you been there? And I think, you know, you I read through those and and you kind of go, oh, my gosh, I see there where this is going and I've done that and um but I also liked and actually John mentioned it and it may have been before the meeting even started, but the whole um fight or flight and and I think that is really relevant too because they they say that, you know, humans are designed to either when when you're you're put in an adverse situation, you either fight or you run. And and they translated it here to where the the fighting part is what they call like verbal violence, where you attack verbally or um the other part, the flight part is you just shut down and and you become that silent treatment as a lot of people would call it, so I thought it was good things to point out and reflect us.
Sometimes that silence leads to.
Silence.
Silence. Silence. Barb says sometimes silence leads to violence.
No, you said that. I'm quoting you.
I'm quoting you, it says it right in there.
It does, so.
So I'm gonna suggest for the October work session, eight, nine and ten. And that will finish part two and then the November work session will have the last three.
Sounds great, I'll I'll just touch on uh chapter seven, the the clip notes. Uh chap-chapter six, of course, is stay in your own path, chapter seven was explore other paths. And the skills involved in that include to ask, to mirror people. Uh, we we heard that a few times in tonight's, you know, is is that what you really meant, is that what you're really trying to achieve? Trying to paraphrase what those folks are saying. Uh, to prime them, to try to get those people to talk, not to shut down. Uh, sometimes agreeing with people, coming around and agreeing with them, uh to build and to compare ideas. And those crucial questions to ask include, am I actively exploring others' views? Uh, and uh another would be, am I avoiding unnecessary disagreement? I just wanted to add that as well.
Thanks for taking the time.
So I will uh jump in real quick, you had mentioned November uh work session, uh that is currently scheduled for November thirteenth, which we are away at Capitol Conference. Uh, so just to keep that on your radar, um.
We can move that to December if we need to.
Well, in December, we generally have one meeting because of, so.
Yeah.
Um, just just trying to keep it.
Okay.
Maybe we'd sit around at Bupita Bepo with.
There you go.
The Elks.
Or is there an out lodge down in Columbus?
I'm sure there, I'm sure we can find them, yes.
Any other board comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
To adjourn at seven twenty-two PM, Kraft?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carried.